Over the new cable channel. So be aware that anything you say is quite public. As I've always said, if for some reason we lose our internet and cannot continue, all matters are continued until the April hearing, but we've gone now with two years of it all working well enough to get through the hearings. So the first order of business is to consider the minutes from our last meeting. I know, Daphne, that you need to correct case number three to say high rock, not hard rock. And with that change, does anyone have any other comments or amendments?
No, I think it's fine. Would you entertain a motion to approve?
I would, in a second.
I'll second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So the first matter is to continue the hearing for 26 Ardmore Road. 26 Ardmore Road LLC applicant applied to the Board of Appeals for a special permit under section 6.1.1.2 and any other applicable sections of the bylaw to allow one additional garage space. The request is associated with the demolition and reconstruction of a new single-family home with an attached garage, properties located at 26 Ardmore Road Needham in the single residence B district. We continue this matter so that the developer would have an opportunity to speak with the neighbor who had a number of questions. And I see Mr. Junta, maybe you can bring us up to date as to where we are.
Sure thing. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. George Junta here this evening on behalf of the applicant. And indeed, since the last hearing, my client has had conversations, multiple conversations with the neighbor, and they have discussed quite extensive changes to the area along the common boundary line. Extensive excavation, taking down quite a few trees, are really kind of changing that whole area. So they've been sort of working together. It's my understanding that they have an agreement in principle as to what should happen, but there's still some ongoing discussions with respect to costs and and you know, what the final tab is going to be. Because it is such a large change, you know, we're talking about excavate that the the estimate for excavation just on the neighbor's side at this point is at like $20, $25,000. So that gives you an idea. It's a wholesale change to the common boundary, basically. So they're still hashing that out, but but all of that is to say, you know, we've had these conversations and quite frankly, none of none of that pertains to the the additional garage space that's before the board. So we, you know, we will continue to work with the neighbor and, you know, finalize the plans for the common boundary line because it's in the mutual interests of both parties to work to change that. It'll make it more attractive for both sides, but it doesn't have anything to do with the garage. So we would ask that the board go ahead and approve the third car garage, the additional garage space for a third car garage.
So Daphne is the neighbor represented here tonight? I think it was attorney Howland that represented them last time.
There are no hands raised among the attendees.
Okay, so entertain a motion to approve the special permit?
Well, could we have discussion first?
Sure. Or we can have it after we make a motion to.
Okay, got it. Okay, got it. Thank you.
So you want to make a motion? We approve the third car garage for.
I'll make a motion, John.
Yeah. Go ahead.
I'll make a motion to approve the applicant's application for a special permit under section 6.1.2 of the zoning bylaw for a third car garage.
Second that, Howard?
Second the motion with the ability to have a discussion, yes.
Discuss. Do you have some discussion? Do you have discussion?
The applicant's here for a special permit seeking relief from a zoning provision. I know it's dealing with a third car garage, but it's such a massive exchange of ideas regarding an area and there's such extensive, you know, suggestion about tearing down trees. I just feel uncomfortable by it. That's all. I just feel that the concept of a special permit seeking discretion more detrimental than not. And I feel that the last time the neighbor was very clear about the concerns. I don't know why they're not here tonight. I'm troubled by that somewhat, but I'm just concerned that that there's not some clarity to resolve this issue.
Well, for what it's worth, I'm in very much in disagreement with you. While I think we could reach to consider all of these things, I do not think it's appropriate for the board to be engaged in a discussion of the trees, the landscape, the design of the house. When someone is building a house of right, we're here to discuss a garage and the question is whether the garage would be detrimental, not whether the house would be detrimental or cutting down trees would be detrimental. And I really don't think we ought to be getting into these issues. But in any event, I understand Mr. Junta to say that they've engaged in the discussions that were requested and I take the absence of the neighbor tonight to mean that they're no longer objecting to the approval of the garage.
I have to say, I share Howard's nudginess. I don't know why they're not here tonight. I'd feel a lot better if they had contacted Daphne and said that they were not attending. I don't know. I don't know why they're not here, Tom, but we've kind of started down this road. And I don't know that it makes sense to now shut down the process while they're in the middle of having this conversation. As Howard points out, is a discretionary permit.
Yeah, I mean, I think the only road we started down was that the attorney asked that they have an opportunity to talk.
Right.
And we we we've covered that road. They've had an opportunity to talk.
I think implicit in giving time to talk is giving time to reach an agreement as a result of those talks, frankly. It's just my opinion.
Whatever. So so what do you think we should do?
Well, I just want to read something into the record. I mean, so that I appreciate, John, I have tremendous respect. You've been doing this a long time. And I know that that you've clearly stayed your position, but under 7.5, it talks about that the design is in a manner that's compatible with the existing natural features of the land. And this is exactly what we're talking about. I was, there was discussion about significant removal of 10 large pine trees. And I.
That's not, that's not the design of the house. But, you know, so we won't may not agree on this, but.
So I guess you asked me what I think. I think we should continue to month and see if we can get a resolution. I agree with Peter that it's odd they're not here. We would like to hear from them. This is part of what I think our role is, is to listen to the concern. This is an immediate butter and continue it one month.
Mr. Legris?
I disagree. I think that they had ample notice. They had counsel. I see their absence as a sign of their ask for more time working and for clearly some path getting there. And, you know, again, let's not forget, if there was no garage door in front of this, we wouldn't even be here because this is all by right, from what I understand. We're just talking about the addition of nine, nine, nine or nine and a half more feet of vinyl or some type of garage door that's not even facing this neighbor's side, if my memory is correct, Mr. Junta, correct?
That's correct.
So I, my motion still stands to approve the applicant's application for a special permit under section 6.1.2.
Well, I think we, I think we should vote on the motion. And I'm going to call for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
May I just?
Go ahead.
Say a few things. So since the last meeting, I've reached out to the owners. We had, we had three meetings since. And I've been updating George on the results of each meeting. The first meeting, we walked aside with the with the wife, Nina. I think her last name is Jane. And I explained to them that the fence is located on our property and it will need to be moved. There was no objection to that. Surveying state clearly shows that. They, as George mentioned, they wanted to, they wanted to remove the mound that is between us. It starts out pretty shallow, small mound in the beginning and closer to the end of the actual house. That's where it starts to get hard.
You know, could I stop you? I mean, I, I don't think it's really helpful at this point to hear the history of what the back and forth is. Do you know, do you know, have they agreed?
Yeah, so that's where, that's what I wanted to get to. Sorry, I'll make it really short. So basically, throughout this one month of communicating back and forth, there was never any concern about the garage. And George has all of my emails communicating with them that we're agreeing on all the points. It was just about the cost of excavation. And I want to bring to your attention that as part of this $20,000 to $25,000 cost, they're excavating their own backyard. That's probably 60% of that cost is their own backyard, which has absolutely nothing to do with even our border between us or the trees that are being removed between us. I said that I will remove all the trees at my own cost. They agreed that they will remove the fence because it's an incorrect location. We'll do nice planting between us, but but majority of work that John, George alluded to for $20,000 to $25,000, that's, it's their backyard that they're going to be hiring a separate excavation company to do. And it's really not even related to this project. We have that documented.
Okay, thank you. So Howard, if you want to make a motion to continue before we vote on this.
I move to continue until we, one month, so hopefully we can hear from both parties. Whatever they decide is perfect. And I just want to comment in a positive note that there's been tremendous work here that the coming, that the butter is revising their landscaping, they're working together as neighbors. It's consistent with the natural landscaping as the special permit requirement discusses. This is, this is great. That, and that this construction can go forward, that this doesn't affect the construction. This is just that it's already in place. And so I don't think, I don't see a tremendous detriment of one month. And I hopeful that we can get resolved and hear from the the neighbor, even just in writing, to say this has been resolved. We've agreed of something that we have something to work with.
Mr. Legris, do you want to second his motion for a continuance?
I don't.
Okay, so there's no motion. I'm calling for a vote on the motion to approve the special permit. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Nay.
Okay, so the motion fails. And I don't know, George, what you want to do?
Well, quite frankly, you know, if it's a choice between a denial, I'd rather withdraw than than face a denial than have a final denial. And and it is frustrating from from my client's perspective to hold up construction. Howard, I understand your, your view here, your concern, but it's also asking the developer to basically hold off doing anything for another month for issues that have absolutely nothing to do with the house or the garage that's being, you know, the garage that's the, that's the subject of the special permit. So if, quite frankly, if it's to that, then I think, you know, my, having discussed this previously with my client, I think we'd rather withdraw. And we'll simply build, you know, he'll either build the house with the space or without the garage.
I think it's going to be detrimental to both parties. And at this point, considering where the economy is going and where the costs are, I'm not willing to lose another month for absolutely not my fault to make a neighbor, to make a neighbor happy. I don't understand what is this about at this point, to be honest with you. But they definitely, I, we will not be continuing this because I'm not wasting any more time. I just think, I don't think it's fair. And I think that at this point, if they decide that they want to do their own backyard, I'll be a supportive neighbor, but they're going to have to do it through their own property. I will go with, I will, I will keep whatever topography I can keep. I will place the house in space and it's just going to be, it's, this is it.
I don't understand what the, what the problem is if you're going to build the same house, whether you put a garage door on the front or not. I'm not quite sure I understand how we're shutting down construction by waiting a month, but you're, you're the builder, not me.
So how?
In any event, I'm sorry, let's come on. The motion, the, the matter has failed. If George, you can't apply for reconsideration, you can re-apply and ask us to, you know, waive the one-year waiting period. I'm sorry. I think this is a bad result. I think the matter's decided and we need to move on.
All right, Virgil.
Case number two, 32 Markley Road. Wes and Lauren Soper owners have appealed the decision of a building inspector dated December 17, 2021, determining that a proposed addition of garage did not comply with the setback requirements of the zoning by law. The subject property is a corner lot at 52 Markley Road in single residence B district. I see we have Mr. and Mrs. Soper with us this evening. We've, we've received and read your written materials. We've also received and read the cases that you cited in your materials. So why don't you go ahead and kind of summarize anything that more that you want to say at this point and we'll move to a vote.
Yeah, well, thank you. And I'm glad that you guys read it. I know that was a pretty lengthy memo. But we know that there was an ask at the end of our last hearing to really go back and make sure we were citing the case law we found, we found some additional case law. As you saw, we found some additional evidence as well by going through some public files of corner lots. And so we're feeling, you know, pretty confident in what we were able to put together. You've already read it, so I don't know that unless you want us to kind of go back through and summarize or if there's questions, I would love to hear what your thoughts were as you read through. Basically, what I tried to do was to go through our last conversation and just address everything that we had discussed during our conversation and then find relevant case law for that. And then again, that additional evidence of a corner lot from 1984, where it was clearly identified to have a rear setback. So were there any questions or anything that you guys wanted to, to start the discussion off with?
Well, you know, might be helpful that, and I appreciate, this was very detailed. I read it, made a lot of notes. And I tell you, I wouldn't mind a brief summary of what you've, what you've concluded. I know has to do with ambiguity regarding a corner lot. If you can just summarize where we were as a month ago, I've read my notes, but it'd be helpful if you can just bring it up. If you can share a screen and show us exactly, I know where the configurations are, how that plays out. But I appreciate all of that, but a quick refresher and a visual with the site map would be very helpful for me personally.
Oh, okay, so share our plot plan or survey, is that what you mean?
Ideally, if you can. If not, we could, I have copies of, you know, we can look through, but just overall summary.
Yeah, I can pull it up, but I need just a minute.
Yeah, Wes is going to log in. He hasn't had his computer, so he'll log in and pull it up on his screen in just a minute. So we'll have that up there for a second. But yeah, I think for, from, you know, our conversation in January, I think all of us, the, all the board members, even Dave Roach, the building commissioner, agreed that what he was citing in 1.3, the definition of frontage was ambiguous. I think someone even said it just wasn't helpful for trying to interpret a corner lot with a rear setback. You know, his explanation was that sideline was really defining something more than what sideline is a common, you know, common everyday definition language is defined by. And I believe sideline to mean the outer boundary line. You see it in a building inspection card, you see it in surveys, sideline is cited everywhere. It doesn't mean side yard or side setback. And then also, you know, when we talk about how the commissioner was interpreting it, I think someone had asked, all right, well, if the frontage definition is ambiguous, then why are you defining it this way? And the commissioner said, well, you know, I've been doing this for 25 years and I've always just interpreted corner lots to have no rear setback. And as I had pointed out in for case law, right, the courts have ruled that even with past interpretations, it's not material because if the town's interpretation is incorrect, regardless of how many times the building inspector interprets it, doesn't make, make it right, right? And so I think another thing that was really interesting is finding, again, I just, I went to the building department. I pulled maybe a dozen or so corner lot files. And can you see it? Sorry. So I pulled, you know, a dozen or so corner lot files. I got really lucky. I think it was 1262 Central Ave. There was a public hearing notice. They actually had a cutout from the newspaper. And it said very plainly, there were, there were some special permit that was related to their rear setback. They're a corner lot. And then in the notes from the board in 1984, it said very clearly multiple times that this corner lot had a rear setback. So I think we can, oh, there we go. Great, Wes, thank you. I think we can, can pretty clearly see that prior commissioners have interpreted the same exact language as as having these corner lots that have a rear setback. And so I think the case law that I cited, right, where it says that, let me just find it, "An ordinance or bylaw imposing such restrictions on the use of property ought not to stand when it is so vague and ambiguous that its meaning can only be guessed at. A statute which either forbids or requires the doing of an act in terms so vague that men of common intelligence, right, the building commissioners in the same town, must necessarily guess at its meaning and differ as to its application violates the first essential of due process of law. And this is no less true of municipal ordinance or regulation." So I thought that was a pretty interesting case and obviously speaks to what we're, what we're talking about. And then there's one other thing I know that came up. I think all three board members mentioned this, which is overturning a commissioner is a big deal. I don't, I don't say that it's not. It obviously will set precedence. But I think you can see from the case law that I cited, it's not necessarily really a permissible reason to deny a permit, right? In Donovan versus City of Woburn, the courts, the courts were clear that a board may not deny a permit simply by conjuring up a parade of horribles, particularly when it has the power to prevent them. So I think just to wrap it up, it's again, I mean, our permit request is really modest, right? We're taking a 20 and a half foot by 20 and a half foot by garage, like 15 feet tall. We're turning it into about a 19 foot by 23 foot garage by 18 feet high. We're moving it five feet further away from our property line. I think, Howard, you even said that's kind of the irony in all this. So the increase of the garage is really negligible. And we're doing this because we're going to have five kids in a month or maybe two months. I don't know when. And we really just need the largest garage that we can accommodate. And it's very modest, very modest size at that. So I, I don't want to spend too much time. I know, again, it was a lengthy memo, but we felt that there was a lot of case law out there that really backed up the fact that this is not easy, cut and dry. I mean, I think we can all agree. The language is incredibly ambiguous. We know that prior building commissioners have interpreted corner locks to have a rear setback. And we're just asking that the town honor what we believe is by right for, you know, a property owner in Needham.
Do you have other questions, Howard?
No, so we've got the map up. Thanks very much. Can we just scroll down a little bit to the, so we see the existing, which is pretty tight to that line. If you could scroll down to the new, the proposed.
The proposed is over here, is.
There it is. And so that in fact is, it shows 10 feet. So as, as the applicant says, they moved the garage away from the, the side setback, which I think is an improvement. I think this looks pretty good. And thank you for your research and presenting it.
On the other hand, Howard, I want to point out to you that if we buy the applicant's position, they could change their plans and move the whole house out to 10 feet. And by adopting their position, we're saying that from now on, anybody with a corner lot can pick one of the sides where they could build the house 10 feet from the lot. I mean, I agree that in this particular case, you know, it's not an overwhelming mass that's being put there and it's actually being moved farther apart. But the effect of ruling that there's only a 10-foot setback means that the whole house the next time, or even these people could of right build the house 10 feet away.
John, I have not considered that, that legal ramification you've highlighted. But, but I have looked at and feel regarding the ambiguity, there is ambiguity in, in, in the statute as it's written or proposed as it exists in the bylaw. And, and that concerns me. And this, this project, as the applicant points out, is, is moving in a way. And this particular project, I think it's, it's, it's a appropriate use of the discretion of the board. Now, I'm concerned deeply what you've described. I have not thought it through as carefully as you have. These cases came late this afternoon. Unfortunately, I was very busy at work today.
It has nothing to do with the cases you got today. If we accept their position, we're saying people can build their houses 10 feet from the lot.
I hope we can run a decision. I hope we can run a decision that's much more narrow than that. That deals specifically with, with the ambiguity and as it relates to this particular home. I hope we can be narrow in our presenting.
I don't, I don't see it. In order to give them the relief they're requesting, we have to find that the owner of a corner lot gets to pick one side as a rear lot and another side as a side lot. And therefore they can build within 10 feet of that line.
Can I just say something?
So, so, so the decision goes far beyond the specific project.
Well, I just, I, I, I don't know that, at least I did not see anything in the bylaws that said any property owner in Needham gets to pick their, what, what's considered a side or a rear. It's that the rear is opposite your front door. So I don't, I mean, I guess, I guess if, I guess if somebody was buying a corner lot and they knocked it down, they could move their, their front door or.
If we adopt, if we adopt yours.
I don't, I don't get to choose because my front door is where it is, right? I mean, it's, I can't, I can't change that. So I only have one rear, which is opposite my front door. Right, yeah.
Our address is, is Markley. It's not, it's not Alfordton.
Right, so it's opposite the Markley front.
But you're, you're asking us, well, you could knock down your house and change it or the next owner could. But the real point is, is you're asking us to find that on a corner lot, owner has the right to build a house 10 feet from one of the lines. Well, let's go on and see what other people have to ask or to say. Daphne, is there anyone here who's asking to be heard on this? Daphne? Did we lose our dealer? Person? I'm sorry.
Wesley, could you please take the, your screen share off? Thank you. There is one hand raised. Okay, I'm going to promote this person. All right, he's been promoted.
Who do we have?
We have Carlos. A, Carlos A. Carlos, could you please unmute your?
Carlos, could you please unmute your?
Hi, yeah, I'm muted. Am I on the spot now or?
Yes.
Perfect. Yeah, so I'll introduce myself. I think I spoke briefly last meeting and I'm terrible speaker, so I'm uh um keep it short for everybody's benefit. I'm, my full name is Carlos Argalagos and I'm the side neighbor uh directly at bodying the property line in discussion. Let me turn on my video which uh all right, sorry about that. Uh, so yeah, I'm the side neighbor right at the property line and discussion and my my point of view, I presented a letter last uh meeting in January. I'm not gonna bore you with the details of that. My perspective is as a side neighbor relating to that property line, uh neighbors like me are severely affected because um uh, if this is allowed to be built at ten feet, properties like mine across the whole town will have much less uh space to both sides than any other property in town, because we'll have separation as a side lot on our side, but then it'll be a back lot to our side. So we uh, in that case, we're at a huge disadvantage to most other properties around. Um, so that that's kind of our viewpoint. We view this from our side as a side lot. And in my opinion, it's kind of like a, right, we assume these two are fronts. Anything not joining a front has to be a side. That way, like, it's consistent and applicable across the law. I just don't understand how I can stand for my property and look out and it's considered a side setback, but I step one foot over the line and I turn around and suddenly it becomes a a back setback. So I feel like keeping both asides, it makes it consistent. So that way, it's consistent for me as well as for my neighbors across the whole town. Uh, so that's kind of my perspective and thank you for for listening to me.
Thank you. Uh, does anyone on the board have a further question of the applicants?
I just have one question, Mr. Chair. I guess the part that I'm still struggling with a little bit, and first off to the applicants, again, thank you for all the detailed um points here. Did you find any case on point? Because I read these cases, but I didn't see anything on point specifically regarding corner lots. Were there any cases that you identified through the court system pertaining to corner lots and interpretation of setbacks there?
No, I I searched high and far. Um, I think I found one in Michigan. Um, but I've searched high and far and I couldn't find anything. And I I don't know if this is because from when we spoke last, I mentioned I pulled like a dozen towns in Massachusetts just to see how they define corner lots. And everyone that I pulled defines corner lots explicitly. So I don't know if it's maybe there's not as many towns with ambiguous language. I I don't know. Or maybe it's, I mean, a lot of the case law was more around big projects. So I don't know if it was just kind of small peanuts and people didn't take it that far. But now I searched, trust me, I spent a long time trying to find a corner lot case and I couldn't.
Okay, in my additional case, you you reference in your memorandum that the word sideline is language that's commonly used for any line. Um, you know, my layman's reading, I'm not a surveyor, but I am a lawyer and I read sideline as being a sideline. And I spent a bit of time on the internet trying to find surveying terms and whatnot. I'm just trying to gauge what your authority for the term sideline being commonly used for any line as opposed to a sideline or a side setback is.
Yeah, I mean, um, I found sideline in an online dictionary. Um, I forget which one it was, and it stated clearly a sideline is an outer boundary line. That's where I first found that that definition. Um, and then as I was pulling the public files for those corner lots, I noticed that, you know, because there's always a building inspection card, and I noticed that in the building inspection cards and on the surveys, it's, it talks about sidelines quite frequently. And when you look at how sidelines are talked about in those inspection cards or in the surveys, it's talking about it to meet any part of the property. It's not saying sidelines, rear yard lines, front lines. It's just saying sidelines to talk about, you know, have you looked at all the different outer boundary lines of the property? So I, yeah, I I mean, I'm not the expert, but at least in the common ways I've seen it used, it doesn't mean side yard or side setback.
You go ahead.
Uh, I mean, I've spent a lot of time looking at this as well, and thank you for pointing us in the direction of those cases. I, and I did watch the hearing from January. I guess I start from the the premise that the a determination by the zoning enforcement officer is entitled to a certain amount of deference because that's his job. And you know, you you have to find, I think, something really specific to to kind of stand on in in order to change that. Uh, I think myself that the the bylaws is basically silent on this. I don't think, I don't think there's an ambiguity. I'm not sure, I I'm not sure that Dave Roche's reading of frontage makes any sense. Uh, the word sideline, and to think frankly, is used in that same sentence in two very different meanings. Sideline of a road versus sideline of a lot. Uh, so I don't think you can draw any conclusion as to how the word is used there. To me, and and again, I read the cases. I don't think that the cases were were terribly convincing. Uh, they certainly weren't on point and 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 as Nick did, I looked for cases. I didn't find cases. I went to my go to Helion zoning manual. He didn't have any cases and the party doesn't have any cases. They don't exist. Uh, so I I to an extent fall back on to an, uh, basically, uh, when I walk down the street and I turn the corner and I'm looking from the street past the house, it's a side yard. And when I walk to the next house and I look from the street to the house, it's a side yard. I just logically, it seems to me that it's a side yard, not a rear yard. Uh, you know, and in terms of the nineteen eighty, whatever, eighty two, eighty four case, I just point out that uh yes, it's called a rear yard, but at the end of the day, is that decision makes clear at that time, both the side and rear yards were the same. So they were gonna need relief regardless of what you called it. They both had a fifteen foot setback. Uh, and in the end, they got a variance. So I I didn't find that particularly persuasive that there's a a tradition of dealing with these lo- these lines as rear yards. Uh, I I certainly understand building commissioners come and go and and they do potentially have differing interpretations. But in independently of that, as I say, I I I end up with, to me, it just seems to be a side yard. And and it it's the the implications for this particular house may be unfortunate. But a- as you say, I I think if we overturn the, if we uphold the appeal, we have now, in effect, judicially determined that there is a rear yard on a corner lot. And I don't even know how that would be determined in the future. I I have seen bylaws that allow the the property owner to pick, as as you've said, you pick one line and that's the front. And that in turn will then determine what the rear and sides will be. We don't do that. So I I'm I'm left with, I I think it's a side yard. That I haven't been convinced that it's a rear yard.
So I I think as a policy matter, I look at this and um y- you know, the rear of this house is not facing the rear of another house. It's facing the side of another house. And therefore, I think that house ought to have the protections that are given to uh side setbacks. Um, I also can say, again, as a policy matter, I served several years ago on this big House Committee and we came up with a number of amendments to try to stop the massing of houses that would overwhelm neighbors. And one of them was increasing the side setback from ten to fourteen feet. Um, prior to that change, the front and rear would have been the same, both ten feet. But the purpose of those changes were to offer relief to the neighbors from having a large mass of a house loom over them. And while in this particular case, they're not proposing to have the whole mass of a house loom over the neighbor. Uh, I I think if we were to find that there's a rear setback, as I said earlier, that would give any property owner that's not a corner lot the right to be within ten feet to build the house, not just a garage, to build the house ten feet from the neighbors. And I think it would be bad policy. So, um, you know, I I I don't think that the bylaw is explicit on this. Um, but I I think we have a tradition and the courts have a tradition of sticking with the interpretation given by the administrator unless there's some clear reason to overturn it. And I think as a policy matter, it makes sense to make people keep houses fourteen feet away from their neighbors. Uh, other comments? Mr. Legris?
I I I I struggle, just like I think everybody else does, where we want to be sympathetic to this particular case, but I agree with you, Mr. Chair, that you know, absent something blatant that supports, you know, a lack of clarity there, I have to defer to the zoning enforcement officer.
Mr. Goldman?
Uh, I I agree with what what was said, John. I appreciate, you know, giving some some history on that and the ramifications. Uh, e- even though this applicant is is um, wh- what they're doing seems quite reasonable. Unfortunately, they're they're running up against a a the zoning code. In this instance, it has a harsh result. But I I I agree with what what you and 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 Nika's saying as well. And Peter as well.
All right, so Mr. Legris, you want to make a motion?
Motion would be to deny the applicant's application under section or the interpretation of the building inspecting, of the building inspector under one point three seven five one, four point two one.
So the motion is to deny the appeal?
The motion is to deny the appeal.
Second that, Howard?
I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Sorry. All right, we need to move on to the next case. Eleven fifty four Great Plain Avenue. Public notice is hereby given to Charles River Ballet Academy LLC applicant is applied to the Board of Appeals for a special permit under sections three point two point one, five point one point one point five, five point one point two, five point one point three, and any other applicable sections of the zoning bylaw to operate a ballet school and to waive strict adherence to parking and parking design requirements. Subject property is located at eleven fifty four Great Plain Avenue in the single residence B district. Um, this is Mr. Juntai, Bill.
Yes, yes, indeed. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, George Jutta Junior, on behalf of the applicant Charles River Ballet, and with me this evening is Emily Umland, the owner principal um of Charles River Ballet. Uh, so I mean, in in some ways, this is a very simple application. This is really an application to move uh Emily's existing ballet school operation from one end of Great Plain Avenue to the other end of Great Plain Avenue. So uh, basically, though, to start at the beginning, so Charles River Ballet has been in operation since approximately nineteen ninety seven. Uh, first at uh the First Parish Church at twenty three Dedham Avenue. Uh, then in two thousand and seven, when that church was undergoing some reservation, uh, surrender renovations, um, there was an additional or temporary facility opened up at the First Baptist Church at eight fifty eight Great Plain Avenue. Once the renovations at the First Parish Church were completed, uh, the s- the the program there resumed. Uh, and at the same time, Charles River kept the program at the First Baptist. So there were two programs running. A- as the board may be aware, uh, this past June, the First Baptist Church has, they decided to cease their operations and basically shut down the church. So as a result, Charles River Ballet had to find a new location for their program there. So they found the congregational church that up the other end of Great Plain Avenue at eleven fifty four Great Plain Avenue. So basically, this is a an application to move the operation from the First Baptist Church to the congregational church. And um, and really, there's there's two parts of relief that the school needs to to move to the congregational church. The first is a special permit for the use under the bylaw. Uh, they, a private school requires a special permit, so that's required. And then in addition, a special permit is required for parking. I'll get into that in a minute. But first, let me uh just, a- and the board should be somewhat familiar because the board actually approved the operation at the First Baptist Church back in two thousand and seven. And um I know there's at least maybe two members of the board that were on that decision. So um, so the the operation there, that the the ballet school basically is only one class at a time with only one teacher at a time. Uh, maximum of sixteen students, but on average, there are ten students in a class. Uh, the average actual attendance is nine. It's generally, sometimes people are sick, but they can't make it. Uh, there are some adult classes, but it is primarily uh, uh, basically ballet instruction for children uh of all ages, uh, with a emphasis on younger children. Classes for this operation are generally three forty five to nine P M, Monday through Friday. Then also, there's two weekday mornings, uh, nine thirty to ten fifteen on Tuesdays and eleven to eleven thirty on Fridays. Uh, there are also Saturday classes from about nine forty five to eleven. So as you can see, it's not an all day operation every day. It's sort of limited hours. And in fact, during the week, it's mostly in the afternoon, sort of after school hours, uh, you know, sort of even after some work hours. Uh, and and the ske- the classes are all scheduled so that there's a break between them, so there's no overlap. And in the, you know, the long time that uh, that the school has been running, there had, it, there have not been any real incidents, issues, problems with respect to parking or traffic or otherwise at either location, either at the First Parish or at the First Baptist. Uh, so now, the use special permit is pretty straightforward. The bylaw something requires a use special permit. There really aren't any ca- any uh criteria that apply to that. But parking, uh, in order to get a parking waiver, we're gonna show some unique characteristics to the site or to the use that justify it. And the reason we need a parking waiver is because the bylaw requires us to calculate parking overall for all the uses on the site as if they were there simultaneously. And as you see in the memo that I submitted, if you do that, if you assume all of the different activities all occur occur simultaneously, you wind up with a rather large number of parking spaces required, namely, uh, a hundred and thirty four spaces. But as I said, that's if you assume that they're all operating together at the same time, which never happens. Uh, a- as indicated in the memo, you know, you have the church service that occurs on Sundays. There are some other church activities that that occur primarily on Sundays. Then there are three different uh theatrical troops that use space primarily in the late afternoons or evenings, uh, and even uh they're only on a seasonal basis. Uh, and there are two preschools, and they're probably the biggest active users on the site. So, uh, you know, so I basically, that hundred and thirty four parking space, that's why we need a parking waiver for the number of spaces. But when you drill down, you actually see that the the actual parking demand is much less. So, but to put this in context, you know, what are we dealing with here? There are currently forty two parking spaces in the parking lot that goes with the church, plus an additional three handicap parking spaces. Plus, uh, there's an additional eight parking spaces directly in front of the the church building on Great Plain Avenue. Uh, the the forty two spaces on site plus the three handicap spaces means there's a total of forty five spaces in the parking lot. So that's actually a fair number of spaces in the parking lot, uh, way more than available at either of the other locations, because neither of those locations have any parking. Uh, the Charles River Ballet, that is. Uh, they they basically have no parking at all. Uh, so, you know, we we think that first off, as a general matter, there's plenty of parking at this location to support this use. But drilling down, uh, the the sort of the numbers and the observed parking actually supports that as well. So as I mentioned, um, the primary activity of Charles River takes place in the late afternoon, basically, you know, for after three thirty. And so during the weekdays, we look and see that the daycares, the two different daycares that are operating out of the church, they are, they are done by that time. They only run up until about two thirty. So they're done and gone. Therefore, the only real overlap is done. Therefore, the only real overlap is going to be on the Tuesday morning and Friday morning classes. So looking at that and trying to take a, a snapshot of kind of what the peak demand would be for tho- at least on paper for those times. If you calculate it up with the two daycares and you add in the administrative offices for the church. You wind up with a, uh, a parking demand of thirty-nine spaces. Then you add the spaces that are required by Charles River Ballet. That raises it to forty-eight spaces, basically only three more spaces than are, than are available in the lot. So, you know, sort of from a technical perspective, the lot is only three spaces deficient. And, and those are really covered by the eight spaces out of Great Plain Avenue. But all this is somewhat academic anyways. Because, uh, Emily and her staff went out and did parking counts in the parking lot. And as it turns out, there is a ton of parking available during the peak demand. So, for example, uh, and I gave you a, a table as a part of the memo that lays out what the counts were. Uh, when you go out into the lot, um, the, the peak demand time, uh, Tuesday at nine thirty. There were only fourteen cars in the lot. So this lot that's got forty-five spaces only had fourteen cars in it. And that's at the peak, peak time. And that's really when both daycares are operational, uh, where you would really expect to have the most number of cars. So even then, there are, there is substantial parking available. But then they also looked at Friday at eleven, which is basically when the other cla- the other morning class runs. There were only ten cars in the lot. So again. On that morning, there were more than adequate spaces available. So, so basically, we look at it that, um, you know. It's sort of one of these things where this is, this is a situation where the parking demand is on paper only and, and isn't reflected, uh, in the real world. And therefore, there are unique characteristics relating both to the uses that operate there, the Charles River Ballet use. Uh, a- and the sort of the overall site that warrant the parking waiver. Now, in addition, the parking lot, because it likely was. You know, constructed and appears to have been constructed when the church building was built in nineteen fifty-four. Well predates the adoption of off-street parking requirements in the early nineteen eighties. And the existing parking area does not comply with current design requirements. Actually complies with several of them, which is a bit of a surprise, but there are a few that it doesn't. And I called those out in the me- memo. Probably one of the most notable ones is the one-foot candle. You know, the, the, the bylaw has this odd requirement that. Every inch of the parking lot is supposed to be lit at one foot candle, which is quite bright. Um, and in fact, um, generally speaking, you don't want that. That high level of illumination, but it's in the bylaw. So the, this lot doesn't comply with that. It also doesn't comply with a few of the dimensional. In terms of the, uh, setback requirements. Uh, so obviously, we need a parking waiver from the design requirements as well. Uh, so, so that kind of covers really why we're here. Uh, one other thing I do want to point out is. Charles River Ballet, you know, they've, they've been, as I said, they've been in operation for a long time. They have a lot of history, a lot of experience with the parking situation. And how to make it run smooth. I think you've received quite a few letters of support, and in a couple of those letters, they mentioned that. And to that end, uh, one of the things, you know, even though there are the eight parking spaces on Great Plain Avenue. And I mentioned them for the purpose of the, you know, sort of the academic analysis, the reality is Charles River doesn't really intend to use those spaces. Uh, instead, the vast majority of the students are going to be dropped off and picked up, and that will all take place inside the parking lot. And as you can see on the plan, and if you took a visit to the site, you'll note that there's actually a circular. Sort of turnaround area or driveway area in the site that is a natural drop-off and pickup area. So with all that, we really, you know, this, this use should be minimal in, uh, impact. Actually, there shouldn't be any impact whatsoever. Uh, the, the on-paper additional demand of parking shouldn't translate to any real world dema- real-world additional demand of parking. Uh, and we think this would be a good fit with the other tenants and other users in the church, and, uh, it's a good application. It also serves the purposes of, in the intent of the bylaw, in that it continues, uh, quality instructional services for children, uh, in the arts. Which is an important thing these days.
And thank you. Um, I mean, what you didn't say explicitly, but what's obvious is that. Um, the, there aren't many people who are students or, who are driving and parking. And you did say that in your memo that, um, most of these are kids who are going to be dropped off and picked up. And so there's no parking to be in. Would you just be a little more explicit about the drop-off and pickup? Will so- some staff member go out to meet people or do they just come in on their own? Yes, please.
Did I just say, I can explain? Um, yeah. So, um, we do. We actually, starting with COVID, have kept the parents outside the building, and we actually plan to continue that because it's worked incredibly well. And it makes the pickup and drop-off a lot simpler. Um, so what we do is the teacher comes to the door with the group that's coming out. And the parents are lined up, and so we release them like one by one to the parent, and then they go off and. Go to their car, and then the next group lines up and, um, they're admitted into the building. Um, and then pick-up and drop-off, we're pretty specific about it, like, um, when there's a new session starting the week before. We send an email that really details exactly where we want people to park or not park while they're dropping their kid off. Um, and then we also have that information like up on our website. Um, the teachers all are really good about keeping an eye on that. Like at our other sites, it's, this is actually. Much easier because they have their own parking lot and the door that we're using like faces the church's parking lot. So. It will be intuitive for the parents to park where they're supposed to, which is in the church parking lot, but like. For ex- it's some of our, at like, um, the Unitarian Church, for example, we have to make sure people don't like. They don't want them to pull up in the church driveway. The church doesn't like that. So if we notice a parent doing that, we have to like remind them or we email them. So, um, we actually, like, I've never gotten a complaint because we're pretty on top of it. Um, as a staff, like preemptively telling people how to do it so they understand. And then if we notice, you know, people doing something that they're not. Just reminding them so that the next time they do it correctly.
Okay. And so I understand you, you're saying that a staff member is at the door. Let out students and to accept in the new students.
Yes.
And therefore is in a position to direct people.
Yes.
If they're doing something crazy.
Correct.
Any of the, uh, board members have questions?
Uh, no question. I just comments. I think it's a great project. It's well organized and, and, uh. Uh, i- it, it seems like the, uh, there's more than enough parking. And John, you point out about the drop-off. Most of these. Students aren't driving there, and I think it's a nice, nice use of some church space. I'm delighted to, uh, support it. Good luck.
Anything else? Okay, let me read, um, the building commissioner, uh. You know, says as long as it's not being your use during church services, he thinks it works. And he would like to see a condition that all drop-off and pickup be from the parking lot and not from the abutting streets. Um, fire has no problems, police has no problems. We received, um. Large group of letters that say the, uh, Emily is a nice person and the programs are wonderful. Um, we received one letter from the butter who. Wants to make sure there'll be no change in the parking arrangements on Great Plain and. I hear that none are proposed.
Yeah, I, I don't think, even if I, I will be very specific with the parents about where they should park, which is the church lot. But even if I were to say nothing, they'll park there anyway because the door we're going to use faces the church lot, and people always do what's most convenient. If you don't tell them what to do. So, uh, there, there'd be no point in them. Like pulling up in front of someone's house on Great Plain and walking down the road and behind the building to the other side, like. Just, but yeah.
It wouldn't make sense. It wouldn't make sense.
Yeah.
All right. So Daphne, do we have anyone who has their hand raised to speak?
Um, evening, Stephen Billhart. Just a, a, a neighbor on Linden Street, and I, I think you've answered my question, Emily, and, and the people, uh, the lawyer, I think. But just as long as they're parking in the parking lot, that's my biggest thing. I don't, I've only been here eight months, and we get a lot of traffic from the post office and. It's a, it's a thorough fare with the, with the school buses in the morning. Um, you know, around seven twenty A M. So I just, I, I just wanted to make sure that the, the parking is in the parking lot or on Great Plain and not on Linden Street. Because that's a, it's a, I know Great Plain's a busy place too, but. So that's, London Street is not, not a parking spot, correct?
Correct. That is definitely what we're planning. And yeah, if you ever have any issue with anyone's doing the wrong thing, just like let me know, and I'm happy to. Give them a little slap on the wrist.
Sounds good. Thank you. That's the only question, and you know, that sounds great. Thank you for appearing me this evening.
Thank you.
Promoted a, a Bob Gispert.
Good evening. My name is Bob Kispert. Uh, I live on Walnut Street. And sounds like a great use, uh, for, for the, uh, for the church after school. I walk through, uh, that parking lot, lot to get up to the train station or the post office. Uh, so I'm familiar with, with basically how things are now. My only question really is, uh, are there occasions like for recitals? When you might have all the classes there together, and if so, how often might that happen during the course of a year?
Um, no, we don't. We have, um. Our performances, like our end-of-year performance, we've done for the last several years at Regis College. Um. We've been part of New Year's Needham, which takes place at Town Hall and Needham Lights. Unfortunately, those haven't happened the last couple of years. Um, I think in the fall, well, actually, that won't happen. Yes, when we do that, something that's like an informal thing, we tend to do it at the Unitarian Church. Because that's our largest space inside, so it makes more sense. Um, so yeah, we don't. Do, we won't, we're not planning to do anything along the lines of a performance. The space isn't really, that we have inside, isn't really. Laid out in that way, if that makes sense. So, yeah.
Thank you very much.
I'm going to go ahead and promote, uh, Sue and Joe.
Sorry, just trying to get all everything going. Um, so heard great things about your program. Um, one of the things that. Uh, comes to mind is, I think the church just really needs to step up and kind of have an engineer come in. And redesign their parking lot. Because if you've been over there and they just repainted everything. But what happens is, we're not only affected by people that rent from the church, but we're affected when the church has events. Or even when they have service, they're parking at the, the post office. So my issue isn't really with you. I mean, it's with, it's with the idea that. Walnut Street where we live is going to take any traffic that's not going to be able to park at the church. And there's a couple of things that just come to mind is if the church redesigned their parking lot. The middle strip could be used as angle parking, so it would accommodate a lot more cars than just the forty-two. I mean, it, it's a, it's a large lot, and they have a lot more. Areas where they could turn into parking as well, I believe. The other thing that I want to point out is your classes only have five minutes in between each of the classes. So if, specifically, if you're having parents drop off and pick up within five minutes. I don't believe that's enough time. If you're going to have a stream of cars, because what happened before. When the church was renting to the temple, they had a preschool. And our street got flooded with people trying to pick up their kids. Because you think it's easy enough to put a kid in a, in a car, but it's like courting cats. You know, the kids want to go off this way or that way. So the whole idea of having five minutes in between classes. I think that that should be accommodated with at least fifteen minutes, if not a half hour. Just to give the flow, okay, this class is gone. Here's another one coming in. It just kind of seems to, to be able to flow better. Yep.
Um, I was just going to say, so we've been operating for over twenty years at the Unitarian Church with this. Amount of time between classes and the parking situation there is much, much worse. Um, and also at the Baptist Church. For the last fifteen years, and we've not had any trouble. Um, there's really not enough time. That kids are awake and out of school in the afternoon to have the length of break that, um, is being described. So realistically, this is working in two other locations that don't have a dedicated parking lot that we can use. Um, this one does, and, um, I'm really confident that. It, it will be fine, um, and it will work smoothly. Um, just because I think the situation here is actually. Better than either of our other two for parking.
Okay. I, I do want to ask, um, you've mentioned the Unitarian Church a few times. But your programs don't run through there as far as your website goes.
Oh, I'm sorry. It's called the First Parish Church. There's first parish. Yeah, that's the, um, it's sorry, I. They are, it's a Unitarian denomination, but it's called the First Parish.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, sorry, sorry about that.
There's another one.
Could I have your address, please?
Uh, forty-nine Walnut Street. But I mean, it really comes down to the church being a good neighbor to us, the neighbors. As the board members might know, um, they are the adjacent property. That is going to turn into condominiums or apartments, and there's not enough parking for all the apartment spaces that will be there. So inevitably, if you have somebody to come and visit, they're probably going to say, just park in the parking lot next to us. Because it's not monitored. And this is, this isn't an issue for you. I'm addressing more the board. Because it isn't an issue for us. We have neighbors that some of their livelihood is driving big trucks. Or, you know, big vehicles that can only be parked on our street. And their livelihood depends on being able to bring those vehicles home. So if you're taking away livelihood of our neighborhoods and our neighbors, it's, it's the church not being neighborly. And it, it's not what a church should stand for, or I believe in a church should be. So that, it's kind of, I'm, I'm more addressing it with a church issue, not with your program. I, I've heard great things about your program. Um, but I would like the board to address a redesign for the parking lot of the church. Because they are, the church is using our streets when they're having their, their fairs. And when they're having service or when they're having, um, funerals. So if they reconfigure, it would be less, less burden on us, the neighbors.
Well, I, I think it would be appropriate if we approve this special permit as we have with some other schools. Impose a condition that the operators have to make sure that there's no backup on the street. Uh, from people that are coming to pick up and drop off.
And who, who is, um, who is the one that you contact if that's not happening?
The building inspector, the building inspector, the building inspector is the zoning enforcement officer, and you would contact the building inspector. If they are violating the term of their permit.
But aren't you saying that the permit is going to allow them to park wherever? So, I mean, they.
The, the, uh, what I'm saying is, is that I would propose. That we impose upon the operators of the school an obligation to make sure that parents do not. Uh, overflow into the street when they're picking up and dropping off. That, that's what I'm suggesting. And, and if there is a problem with them overflowing into the street. You would go to the building inspector who would then speak with the operator.
Okay.
All right. Do we have someone else, Daphne, that wants to be here?
We have, um, four raised hands.
Thank you.
I'm going to go ahead and promote a Sandy White.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yep.
So hi, I um, I live right next door to the First Baptist Church, which is where Emily has been. And I've lived here for twenty seven years, so I've been here the entire time that Emily and her school have been here. And I have to, you know, tell you that there have been absolutely no problems whatsoever with parking. Or traffic backup or, you know, nothing. I I barely even noticed that she's there. In fact. And when I saw her recently, I didn't even know that since COVID she's still there. So I I really. Honestly, I think the impact on parking is really minimal. You know, I also, you know, since I've lived at the church for so long that there have been many events there and and sometimes parking does spill over. On the street for various events that the church has, but Miss Emily's school like. Has has, there's been no problems at all. And I think if you ask any of my neighbors, they would tell you the same thing. We barely know that she's there. Other than the fact that my my two daughters did take ballet from her when they were very small and it was. And I know many people whose children have taken ballet from Emily over the years and it's just, it's a wonderful program. She's an excellent role model for our. For young women, especially young women who want to pursue dance. She's a very special, unique program that's, you know, it's very cool that it's here in Needham. So I just wanted to sort of share my two cents, you know, having lived here right next to her, next to the school. And I remember back when they were small, you know, her ushering them in like in one big group and and you know, it was very efficient. The coming to and from. Her class, so. For what it's worth.
Thank you. No, that's helpful.
Sandy, could I have your address, please?
Yes, so one fifty one Warren Street.
Thank you. We have three more hands up. And Sudbury School, going to promote them as a panelist. Please unmute. Please unmute.
I live at twenty seven Walnut Street. I am directly, one of the direct abutters to the church. As they exit the parking lot, there's a sign that clearly says, no right turn, turn left. And no one ever does that. So I want to make sure that the families that are exiting the parking lot are exiting left onto Walnut Street, not to the right. My neighbor across from me drives a bus and he parks the bus in front of my house and turning right. Would make it impossible to make that turn and for people to exit and enter Willow Street. So who's going to make sure that that is enforced?
Sounds to me like it's a traffic matter.
Like that is the church's matter and the church should convey to the tenant that they are to direct. The parents to make a left turn and not a right turn.
Thank you.
Could I have your name, please?
Sandra Walters.
Thank you.
We have somebody else who wants to speak?
We have three more hands raised. Dana Sullivan, I'm going to promote her as a panelist.
Hi there. My name is Dana Sullivan. I'm a Needham resident. I've lived here for. Eighteen years now. And my daughter Caroline is fifteen. She's been a student of Emily's since she was in preschool. So it's ten plus years now and I'm really, I'm just on tonight to support Emily. Her program is wonderful. It's been such a positive. Thing for Caroline and our family and Emily is extremely organized. You know, the person that just spoke was calling her efficient. I mean, she is. That definitely describes her. She communicates very well to her families and. She makes, you know, during COVID, there were a lot of changes and parking and. Different places to enter the building and she always makes everything extremely clear. You know, with emails and. Yeah, I just wanted to show my support and say that I know that CRBA will be a wonderful tenant.
Thank you.
We have one more hand raised, Michelle Geddis. I'm going to promote her as a panelist.
Hi, I'm Michelle Geddis. I've lived in Needham, grew up in Needham. I've known Emily for a long time. Pretty much since I've. Since birth, but we we were neighbors, so very close. But just to the point, a lot of the questions revolve around. You know, issues and communication and I just wanted to reiterate what Dana has said. The communication is very clear, very specific, and it's not just communicated to the to the. The school and the parents in general. It's very specific to each class because there's nuances. That regarding the age of the children, the number of people, the time that they need to get there. What's required from in terms of preparation for each of the classes. So just wanting to make it clear that Emily's communication is not only thorough and direct. But it's very specific to each of the 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 parents of the children that are coming into each of the sessions. So it's very easy for Emily if she needs to pivot or change something or redirect parents. She can include that in communication that parents are expecting. They look forward to it. So that they know how how to best handle the kids coming into the school. And very could very easily correct any issues that may be, you know, bubbling up from any of the parking. Challenges that that might, that the the group may face. So just wanted to reiterate the the fantastic communication that Emily has given. With my daughter over the last six or seven years that we've been part of the program.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Just one, Dave Fallon. I'm going to promote Dave Fallon as the panelist.
Hi, my name is Dave Fallon. I'm on thirty four Walnut Street. So it sounds like a great program and you have a lot of fans out there, which is great. I think to the point of some of the other folks on Walnut Street. Are the parking counts a reflection of kind of traffic flow? Because that, the whole parking lot unloads onto Walnut Street. So we're the ones who are affected. There's no other exit to the church parking lot. And as Suzanne had said, the church is developing the property next to us, which is going to have another twenty. Spots that are going to exit out onto our streets. So all of a sudden, we're getting increased traffic all the time on Walnut. So I guess that's the concern on this end is this is just adding more.
Yeah, I I tried, um, we went several times to the lot. It was like a Saturday. We tried to go at times both when we felt it would be likely one of our classes would be starting or ending. And when we thought one of the other groups at the church might be there. To to see if there was like congestion or whatever. So we went like on a Saturday at nine forty five, a Tuesday at nine thirty AM. A Thursday at four PM, six PM and eight PM, a Friday at eleven AM and a Friday at three forty five PM, just to be thorough. And each time. I mean, the most cars that were ever in the lot were fourteen and there wasn't really any movement at the time. Like we stayed for like a few minutes and there wasn't like something else that seemed to be letting in or out at that time. In other words, the cars stayed where they were. And the least amount was three cars in the lot. So it was. There wasn't. Like something didn't seem, it didn't seem to me that it would coincide with. A a big exodus of something else, if that makes sense.
Yeah, we just have a lot, a lot more traffic on the street.
From the ballet.
So is when the when the the parking spots are determined. Is is part of track of traffic flow considered in that? Is that why you come up with X amount of spots? Because the the parking lot is big. I'm sure you could reline it and get more spots in it. I guess that's my question.
So so if if I can, so there's a, in general, there's a there's a difference between sort of parking. Right? Number of cars parked in a space in a lot, for example, versus traffic flow. Traffic flow is usually something else you often see on the road. There's like a couple of pneumatic tubes that go across the road. When they're doing a traffic study and you'll see the cars will go, you know, you'll hit bump, 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 right? Because and that counts the number of cars going over it. Usually we don't do that for smaller projects. Those usually are much larger projects because when you look at. Sort of the studies that have been done for smaller scale projects, it doesn't sort of rise above the level of background. So in other words, like a like a school like this that's so small, you know, where your maximum class size is only sixteen students. Doesn't, when you do parking studies, doesn't generate a significant amount that it triggers anything. But that said, certainly, you know, and as somebody who used to live across from Owen's poultry farm. I can very much appreciate traffic because during the Thanksgiving holidays, I, you know, I'd have to wait quite a bit to get out my driveway. So I know traffic can be a real thing. So but in terms of when we're looking at sort of looking at parking and traffic, those are kind of two different things. I will say, I mean, I think there was some mention of the the left hand turn only. And I think you've heard that Emily has been absolutely brilliant with communicating to the parents. And I think that's something she could easily include in her communications to stress the left turn only on on Walnut. To, you know, avoid an issue with that. But I think with respect to her her use, it's really sort of a drop in the bucket versus, you know, the overall.
Yeah, like that Sandy White, who I ran into a couple of weeks ago. I mean, she lives right, her kitchen like looks out onto the parking lot. At the Baptist and and she, I mean, can attest it, like I I just, I don't, you know, it's not a. It's not like a school, like an elementary school or something where everyone, like masses are descending in a certain time. It's like. I not, not a lot.
Okay. And thank you. Anyone else?
We have one more, Megan Laporte. Going to promote her as a panelist.
Hi, I just wanted to follow along what what we were just talking about with the traffic flow.
Could I have your address, please?
Yes, we're nineteen Walnut Street. So that left hand turn, that affects our driveway. We're about forty feet away from that. Where the the street that the church uses as their parking lot exit is our corner lot. So we we that left hand turn affects us tremendously. And I guess my concern is is that. If you have a five minute buffer between two classes and, you know, say in sixteen students per class. You you're looking at having thirty two cars exiting onto Walnut Street every hour. I mean, am I understanding that correctly? Because I feel like the the development next to the church. Is still in appeals in the court system. Based on twenty four apartments and what that traffic flow looks like. So thirty two cars is a little more concerning. To me, coming in and out of the church parking lot and crossing literally the like the two or three houses from. The parking lot exit to Linden Street.
Uh, yeah, I can see what you're saying, but in reality, so we have two spaces. One is the First Parish Church, which we call Studio A. And we target like our bigger classes to that studio because the space that we have inside the building is the bigger room. So it makes more sense. And we try to target the smaller classes to Studio B, which is currently the Baptist Church in which we're hoping to move here. So as George was saying, like, I mean, our our technical limit for a class size is sixteen. But most of the classes are about ten. At the site, we have a lot of people who carpool, a lot of people. Even walk because it's like so close to the center of town or like kids from Pollard will be walking that kind of thing. So it's not. I've never in my years seen that number of cars at once at either site.
Yeah, I think and I think it was it was mentioned earlier to the the other programs at the church. I mean, I'm sure it's written in in paper to be used a certain way, but we get a lot of cars that start at stop sign at Linden Street. And park on the right hand side all the way down to Walnut Street, which now that the parking lot for the post office is left hand turn only. There's a ton of congestion there. And so I feel like between all the churches' programs. That corner between Walnut and Linden is picking up a tremendous amount of traffic for that little, those little side streets. I guess London is a little larger, but Walnut is a pretty small street and we, you know, much like we argued with. The church's building next to us is that we have. A very active street with a lot of people walking, kids playing. So anytime we look at adding additional traffic flow to the street, I think the neighbors all get. Concerned about it. So I I don't know that that's something that can be addressed. I don't know if that's just noting a concern. But my concern is that. It's the church usage and and how many special permits. Keep getting granted and and does this set precedence to future programs and future traffic flow and kind of where does where does the. Where's the limit for what Walnut Street can handle for traffic flow coming out of that parking lot? Twenty four seven versus Sunday for services.
Well, each permit gets heard on its own and you'll, if we have another permit, you'd have an opportunity to speak. I don't know that there's any more space in the church that there could be additional permits, but we would deal with that when it comes up. So thank you.
We have one more, Georgina and Jim.
Sorry. Hi, good evening, everybody. My name is Georgina Arietta Rootneck. I am on Greendale Avenue in Needham. I have been a resident here for over twenty years and I am a member of the Congregational Church of Needham. And I just wanted to say that I saw the this announcement for the zoning board. And I wanted to hopefully welcome Charles River Ballet to our church. I have seen, I love watching the students in the window of the UU church. When they're in there and I have to say that I've been at, I've been at the UU church for a lot of different things. And you're absolutely right, Emily, when you say that it seems like a lot of people carpool. I see like, you know, probably at least two or three or four. Girls coming in and out of a van and it never seems to be overcrowding in the parking lot. When kids are being dropped off and everybody tries to stay safe. And so I I empathize with the neighbors on Walnut Street. But I don't, I don't foresee there being too much of an issue as far as so much traffic in the area. Due to your ballet company being there and hopefully, you know, people will walk more. Or maybe even just park on Great Plain Avenue because it's just quicker, right? To just be on Great Plain and not have to drive in and out of the side streets and worry about that and just walk their kids in. So. That's all I wanted to say. And so welcome and I hope the the move goes through.
Thank you.
Okay, take good care, everybody. Thank you for all the work that you're doing.
More Daphne or is that?
That is all the raised hands that we have.
Okay, so is, and anyone on the board have a further question?
I just, just one, so, um, I, I do like the, uh, the, the, the work that you've done and appreciate the presentment. Also, you know, concern the, the neighbors, the parking, I think we need to be, you need to be sensitive about that. Question I have for George is the hours of operation, they're very specific. Uh, i- is that what we're being asked to, uh, affirm or not? Mr. Chairman, let me be broader. Just want to get some clarity on that.
So, so I would actually ask, you know, the, the hours we've given you are the hours of the, the sort of the current class schedule. Uh, but I would ask, uh, if the board is going to impose our limitations in the permit that they be larger, something more along the lines of nine A, nine AM or eight-thirty AM to nine PM or nine-thirty PM, uh, just to provide flexibility. You know, it's, it's not, not tremendously likely that the classes would change markedly, but still, you know, the, to have to come back to the board, for example, if the permit were limited to the exact hours now, uh, that would be a whole new hearing just to, just to, you know, shift classes around a little bit.
George, can you just repeat the, summarize the ask again, please?
Sure, 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 I would, I would ask, so, so I don't know that, uh, and I defer to Emily, but I don't know that there would be classes earlier than nine o'clock, but I would ask for eight-thirty just to provide some flexibility and cushion. Eight-thirty AM to say nine-thirty PM, Monday through Saturday.
We would be using it way less than that, but that would just allow if we had something that came up that was slightly outside. Like I think, as I see it, we basically have been at the Baptist Church for fifteen years and the schedule has always resembled the schedule that it is now. But it varies a little, like if public school dismissal is at a slightly different time, that might allow us to move the classes a little earlier or later, you know? So it's always going to be kind of like mainly after school on the weekdays, Saturday morning. And then there's usually like one or two morning classes. And it's essentially follows that, but it's, it's hard to be pinned down exactly to the precise hour, just because that kind of.
Mr. Chairman.
We're not trying to like expand, we're just planning to move what we're already doing, so.
You know, my, my, my view is that as long as they're not operating on Sunday, when the church has services, it's, it's not going to be a problem. Do we, other questions or comments?
Is, is there a, an issue if they operate while the daycares are operating in the morning? I mean, it, it sounds like it's an after-school program, maybe it should be an after-school program.
So Peter, may, if I may address that. You know, if you look at the, sort of the parking counts, you know, the fact that even at the, the morning time, when you would expect there to be sort of conflict, and actually when there is a morning class, when the, when the two daycare operations are, are running, you know, there's, there were only fourteen cars in the lot. So there is, e- even at that point, you know, that, and that was the most cars observed in the lot at any of the different times. So I think, you know, even when the two daycares are running, this, this, this ballet school is so minor in its impact that it, it's not likely to, to treat, to really cause a, you know, anything more than a ripple.
The drop-off time for the preschool, the daycare is normally earlier. Like if you're signing your kid up for a ballet class in the morning, you like have more of a lazy morning, then you go to ballet at like nine-thirty, whereas those kids are in already, like if you're gonna go to work, you drop your kid off earlier than nine-thirty. You know, like, so it's not, I think, it didn't appear that there was active drop-off happening at the time that our class would have started when.
That's the only question, George. It's not so much the parking count because I don't think many of the daycare people are driving themselves. It's more the number of cars who are coming in and out uh, at any point in time, particularly when, when the daycare is ending and this program started.
Right.
You know, so ma- ma- maybe we shouldn't go earlier than nine because that way the daycare people will be in place.
Fine.
Yep, a- and just so, you know, the two, the two daycare programs, one starts at seven, one starts at eight. So nine, nine would be well after that.
Okay, anything further? Peter, you want to make a motion on this? Or will you make a motion? Because maybe you don't want to.
Since you asked so nicely. Yes, I, I, I move that we issue, I guess, two special permits to the Charles River Ballet Academy LLC. One being a special permit for use as a private school, George, under section three-point-two-point-one. And, uh, another being a special permit to waive. Uh, let me do first, uh, compliance with, uh, some of the design requirements of the bylaw as laid out in George's memo. I think you laid out six or seven in, in a footnote. Uh, with respect to the waiver, John, I think I might need a little help. It's never clear to me, are we waiving a specific number of parking spaces? And if so, how do we calculate that number?
Yeah, I, 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 I think I, I'm of the view, we just grant a waiver. And, a- a- and, um, I, I think it becomes impossible to deal with the numbers.
Yeah, I agree, I agree, okay. So we'll go give a, a waiver from the, the parking number requirement, whatever that would be. And I guess there's a couple of conditions, and let me see if I state them correctly, and please interrupt me if I don't. First, I'll pick up and drop off the, uh, from within the parking lot onsite and not from the abutting streets. Second, that the, the school will, I don't know, take measures to operate the pickup and drop off such that cars engage in that or not backing up onto the street in the course of picking up or dropping on. A third would be that the hours of operation, I guess, would be nine AM to nine PM, Monday through Saturday. Again, I pause in my motion here, are, are we, uh, authorizing one class of six, maximum of sixteen students?
We can place a limit if you want.
And I. Pete, Peter, on the hours of operation, uh, I think the class ends at nine, so maybe if we say nine-thirty, give them chance to clear out.
Yeah.
Nine-thirty PM.
Okay, why don't we say maximum sixteen students?
Okay, maximum sixteen students. And I, I think that was all that I had on my list. Any, anybody have anything to supplement?
Uh, this is one quick question, now, do we care at all about the, the teachers? Is it just Emily? Typically, we focus on students plus the instructors.
Well, there's one teacher at a time, I, I can't be in two places at once, so I do have some other. One, one teacher and.
So the maximum of sixteen students includes one teacher?
No, sorry, sixteen students plus an instructor. The instructor would, would park. But the students would primarily park as their kids.
You know, uh, we should give them some flexibility on staff people. It's not like this is a tight situation, I mean, if we're gonna put a limit, let's say two or three.
I agree with that, I agree with that.
Let's say three. Because you'll have some high school kids who want to work here. Uh, and again, unless there's anything else, that's my motion.
Second that, Howard?
I second that motion, thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Welcome.
Congratulations. Welcome.
All right, let's move on to our last matter, which is eleven-eighty-three Highland Avenue. Public notice is hereby given that the Harvey Family Dental PLLC applicant is applied to the Board of Appeals for a special permit under sections five-point-one-point-one-point-five, five-point-one-point-two, five-point-one-point-three, and any other applicable sections of the zoning bylaw waive strict adherence to parking and parking design requirements associated with the use of a dental practice. Subject property is located at eleven-eighty-three Highland Avenue in the single residence B district. And, uh, I think, uh, Mr. Richard has been waiting patiently and, and you're on.
Thank you, good evening, everybody. I, I would like to clarify one thing that, um, I did not, um, see until this evening, but the, the zoning district where the premises are located is actually the business district, which was set forth in my application. So I just did want to clarify that one piece. But my, my, I, yes. Uh, so the applicant, uh, Harvey Family Dental PLLC, um, uh, I'm here with, uh, me tonight is Dr. Jennifer Harvey, who is, uh, the sole member manager and gonna be the, the lovely dentist working there, hopefully. Uh, the, um, permitted use in the business district is as of right, uh, to operate, uh, dental practice, which class, is classified as a professional office, uh, under the zoning, uh, use regulations table. Uh, the, the unit that, uh, Dr. Harvey will be occupying is twenty-five hundred square feet. Uh, she would be, uh, doing interior renovations only to this site, uh, as, for, to equip a dental practice. Uh, there was a plan submitted with the application showing a proposed floor layout with seven operatories. And, um, there will be no exterior modifications or additions to the structure. What we're here tonight for, as, as, uh, Mr. Chairman said, we're here for a special permit for waiver of strict adherence of the minimum off-street parking requirements and the, uh, parking plan and design requirements under sections five-point-one-point, five-point-one-point-two and five-point-one-point-three. The, uh, just as set forth in my memo that I submitted with the, to the board, dental offices are specifically designated in, uh, the minimum off-street parking requirement section of the bylaw, um, even though that's not designated in the use regulation table. But, uh, for dental office, it's one spot, uh, off-street parking space for two-hundred square feet of floor area, thereby requiring twelve and a half spaces for this site, rounded up to thirteen. Uh, there's three other commercial units on this site. There's, uh, the Hungry Coyote, which is immediately next to the proposed unit. That, uh, is, uh, as a Mexican restaurant with, uh, offering a table service and takeout service with fifty-seven seats onsite that requires twenty-nine parking spaces, according to the off-street minimum parking requirement section. Subway, uh, which is the next unit over, has twelve seats inside, offering takeout service. Uh, they require fourteen, uh, off-street parking spaces. Verizon, uh, which is the last site on the corner, uh, as a retail space, requires six-point-six-seven spaces. So all totaled, if you add all the, all the spaces up, including the proposed use, it would, it would rise to sixty-three parking spaces total, rounded up. The, uh, the existing parking layout here, uh, on this site, uh, the site's been around for, for several decades. It hasn't been changed as, as far as I can tell from a structure standpoint. And, uh, you know, quite some time, but there are thirty parking spaces onsite, two of which are handicapped, so twenty-eight regular parking spaces and two handicap spaces. Uh, that's less than the sixty-three parking or space, parking spaces required by the, uh, under the zoning bylaws for minimal off-street parking requirements. Which is why we're requesting the relief for the strict adherence to that. And just to speak briefly on the parking design, uh, the, the, the actual parking lot itself uh, is not in compliance with the parking, uh, design review requirement, uh, parking plan and design requirements under section five-point-one-point-three. You know, for example, the minimum, uh, width of the maneuvering aisle, the parking setbacks, landscaped areas, lighting, do not comply with the current, uh, requirements. And so we're seeking, uh, special permit for a waiver with respect to that as well. The, um, with respect to my client's use of the property, it's gonna be used as a dental practice. The hours of operation for seeing patients is expected to be eight AM to five PM. They're expected to have staff about a half hour before opening, so seven-thirty AM and about a half hour after. Uh, so departing around five-thirty PM. Uh, all, all appointments will, uh, patients will come in by appointment only. There's gonna be no, no walk-in dental appointments for Dr. Harvey's practice. So we'll all be by appointments, which, uh, we expect will help control the parking intensity at any given time. Upon opening, Dr. Harvey is planning to have three fully equipped ops that she'll be using. And the, um, the optimistic outlook for the practice is that the, the seven ops uh, will be fully operational, she'll be using all seven ops within two to three years, depending on the success of the practice. Uh, obviously, you know, we're taking an optimistic approach there, and I'm, I'm hopeful that Dr. Harvey will get there as quickly as she hopes. We're expecting that at max occupancy, there would be about twenty-two plus or minus people onsite, including staff and patients. Uh, that number might be less, might be more, um, but we're, we're trying to give the board a good sense of what we think the, the proposed maximum occupancy could be. We, we have talked to the landlord on this site about the other sites, uh, the other uses, particularly Subway and the Hungry Coyote, which are the neighboring sites. Uh, their busiest time is typically lunchtime during the day from eleven AM to one PM. The, my, the applicant's proposed, uh, schedule during that time would actually be a lower intensity time for her practice because she would be having staff taking lunch or there would be a, a, a staggered lunchtime. So there would be, uh, a lower influx of patients at that time. I do want to point out to the board that, um, I did, in addition to the off-street parking, I did look at the on-street parking onsite. I know that that doesn't count towards the off-street parking, but I did observe, uh, up and down Highland Ave, starting from, uh, just beyond the unit outside of the Sudbury Farms Grocery Store on Highland Ave, which is at eleven-seventy-seven Highland Ave, going down to, um, going down to, um, the, uh, George Doherty and Sons Funeral Home on the same side of the proposed unit, which is about a quarter of a mile. And then coming back across the street from the Needham Public Schools Administrative Building and coming back up to just across the property. So that's a quarter-mile distance from the unit. There appear to be seventy plus or minus on-street parking spaces there. And along the, along that route, there's several complexes. Uh, there's one with, uh, is the Bertucci's, um, has a, a large complex there, so off-street parking provided there. Other, other businesses that have their own off-street parking there, but the on-street parking, seventy parking spaces total. And between the unit and Oakland Ave, which is the closest street, uh, which is a side street, which is about three-hundred-and-fifty linear feet from the unit. Um, in that vicinity, um, on both sides of the street, there's approximately twenty-seven on-street parking spaces, sixteen on the side, same side as a unit, and seventeen on the, on the opposite side of Highland Ave. The, the Subway and Hungry Coyote appear, at their busiest time, appear to have a lot of heavy foot traffic, um, as opposed to car traffic. I've been, I've been advised by a, a lot of people that, particularly the landlord, that a lot of the, the foot traffic is actually from the high school students that come across at lunchtime. So they're walking over by foot. That's a, a big clientele for the Subway and Howling, uh, the Hungry Coyote. So, um, I did want to share that with the board. And in addition, both Subway Restaurant and the Hungry Coyote, uh, in two thousand and twelve for Subway and two thousand and nineteen, uh, for the Hungry Coyote, both of those establishments applied for a similar permit, uh, special use permit for waiver for minimum off-street parking requirements and the, uh, parking plan, uh, and design requirements. And both of those applications were granted, uh, by the board. And, uh, so in our, just to, you kind of wrap things up in, in that respect, based on the, the prior history of the board having granted similar applications to abutting sites, uh, to, to the abutting neighbors, having granted those. And also on the fact that the most recent use of the site, which was a, a day spa, which operated at a twenty-six person maximum capacity, uh, where we would be lower than that. Based on the, the most recent use, where we would be coming in and having a less maximum, hopefully a less maximum capacity than that, the use would not be substantially more detrimental than the most recent use of the space and the overall use of the space that already exists than the proposed use. So we are requesting that the board, uh, grant the special permit for waiver of minimum off-street parking requirements and the, uh, parking plan and design requirements.
Okay, let me read some comments we have from town officials. The building commissioner says, it looks like they're providing less than half the required parking. Unfortunately, the two restaurant uses have taken most of the parking without some compelling evidence of surplus parking around this building. I'm not in favor of a parking waiver. Uh, the engineering department, uh, joined with that comment. Fire department has no problem. The police had no problem. And, um, the health. The police had no problem and um the health department had no comment and neither did the planning board. Um. Uh I I don't I don't think we'd have any problem waiving the design requirements. It's been our practice that. If people are not expanding a building and there's an existing parking lot. Um we we as a matter of course waive the design requirements. Um I I I think based upon the comments we've received from the building commissioner. W- w- we do have a concern about whether it actually works. And um you know, what what I think is missing from your submission is something like the people. Previously did, and that's going out and doing a survey on the ground. Um I mean, I mean, the parking requirements in the bylaw are somewhat theoretical. But I think what we're really concerned is, are there spaces there? And actually, I I I mean, I think your client ought to be concerned about that because it's gonna affect her dental practice if people. Can't find a convenient parking space. Um but but I I'm I'm concerned, given the comments that we have, that you haven't done some actual survey. Of what the actual use is. Uh do other board members have questions or comments?
I I think you hit the issue exactly, John. Uh every every time I think either one of these units or uh the one down by Bertucci's has turned over, we've. Had a some analysis of what the parking demand is. Because we all know that there is a day of reckoning where the parking will have been allocated to tenants and simply because. We have done it for previous tenants, that does not mean that there is adequate parking left. So I think I think the applicant needs to demonstrate that that is in fact the case.
Um other comments?
Um John, just a notes and comment maybe for the applicant is. There I have in part of me, I didn't walk the back of the site. I actually never thought the spots to the left of this. Were part of this parcel. I always thought they were part of the other parcel. So I guess the question for the applicant returned to Richard is. Um are there X number of dedicated spots for staff that the landlord has provided to you? And or for the other two units in the building, especially towards the back?
Uh I there are no um dedicated spots with respect to. Um. With with respect to the unit, um I would just, let me just confirm that um.
I think that's that's my recollection when this came up before the landlord did not want to designate spots. Uh al- al- also, you know, your observation is correct. I think there are a lot of Dunkin' Donuts.
Yep.
People use this parking, even though it's not really with the property. And also.
I'm guilty of that one.
Going in the exercise.
Yeah, so uh Mr. Lig- Ligris and Mr. Chair, um the the parking is all um you know, common parking on site, so there are no. Um dedicated spots. The landlord was not uh you know, did not grant dedicated spots on this, so they would all be um you know, common. With the other unit owners. And and also to fall off on one point, um you know, just to just to be clear. The the parking spaces to the left, um I I think those are, while they're shown on the the plan that was prepared. It's my understanding that those spots are actually not um you know, part of part of our lot. They don't they don't constitute the. The thirty spots on site. So those are those are six separate spots on a on another site, even though I I understand they are shown on that. That plan, but I I don't believe that they're they're included here.
Um I I mean, I I I will say. Uh you know, there's been a constant turnover of the tenants there, and so. Uh I've always worried about the parking, and when I go to Sudbury Farms, I normally drive across the back so I could check it out. And at least the times I'm doing my grocery shopping, there do appear to be spaces in the back. But I I'm I'm not sure how it sits at the busiest times, you know, around noon. Uh when the restaurants are very active, so I I I really think you need to go. You know, you you can do it yourself or having a a professional person. Actually go out and do some counts of how many spaces are available at the busiest times.
Yeah, I I I would recommend that to my client that we do so. Um. And you know, I'd I'd appreciate if if she would comment if that was something that that we would we would commit to doing and uh possibly seeking to continue this. Meeting um this hearing to the next meeting, so we can present some information uh as the board's requesting. Dr. Harvard, does that sound reasonable?
Yeah, of course. And then also, um I wanted to mention that we won't be operating. At lunchtime, so that kind of offsets the lu- lunchtime issue. Um if we aren't. Um seeing patients because we're having lunch.
Well, I I I doubt that you wanna commit to be shut down for two hours.
Um correct. So you want a two-hour um survey of parking there?
Yes, I I I I think you 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 need to do a survey, uh uh do some actual counts. And tell us with the demonstrate to us that there are spaces available. And and you really ought to do that for your own, as as I said, I. You know, it's one thing, the clientele of uh Subway, but I think dental patients are not gonna be happy. If if they have to park up by the school administration building and walk a quarter of a mile. So I I I I I think you need to assure yourself and us that there are actually sufficient spaces.
When and when you do your count, if if you want us to consider the on-street parking, you should include that in your count too.
Yes, yes, you know, count, count, you know, within some reasonable.
Right.
I mean, I I don't know that a quarter of a mile is very reasonable, but.
Yeah.
You you know, w- we'll take in your count how many on-street spaces are available to I. I I I think I think you'll I think you'll find that probably at least the ones across the street on the high school side. Have a number of available spaces. It's not perfect in terms of crossing over the busy street, but. But you can count them as well as the ones in the lot. All right?
Thank you. Are there any other um concerns that um you know, we should address to alleviate for the board for next meeting?
Um. Uh uh I I mean, I the the a thought, depending upon what your count shows. I mean, you might commit to keep the practice at. You know, three offices or something if there is a problem. I mean, that would help deal with it. Um you you know, eleven patients and three or four staff members. Is is a lot of parking and it's not just in and out parking. Um but but if there are enough spaces, then you know, your your full usage is fine.
Yeah. Okay, I I do wanna just suggest to the to the board that, you know, for like a a dental practice, just from a. You know, a operational standpoint, you know, while it might be seven operatories and we might have a number of patients in there. On the, you know, there might be some overlap there. We're not gonna be having all, it's just not practical for my client to have all seven operatories. You know, fully, fully committed to patients, just because it it just doesn't lend itself well to that. So even though there are seven ops, it wouldn't be as if each operator is gonna have. You know, at full capacity, there's gonna be, you know, open rooms and there's gonna be one doctor using, you know, more than one room at a. At any given time. Um there would be patient overlap between between appointments, but that would be fairly short-lived because. While the appointments are going on, they're gonna be coming out at the end. There are gonna be the the next patient coming in. So that overlap, while there would be, it would be there. It would be short-lived, you know, each time.
Okay, so so I think the key is to demonstrate that there is in reality available parking. And uh come back next month and we'll deal with this. Does anyone else have any? Kind of concerns about this other than the number of parking spaces?
I wish you well, and and I think it makes sense to 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 break. Uh would you entertain a motion to continue for one month?
I will.
That's the motion, uh so that the applicant can uh obtain parking analysis regarding uh available parking. Uh in including uh on uh off-site streets to me, including a street parking uh a along that area.
So I can do.
And meeting.
All in favor?
Aye.
And that meeting will be taking place April twenty eighth.
Okay, but I would just point out, uh Mr. Richard, that you could perhaps talk with Daphne because there has been. One particular traffic consultant who has done counts in that neighborhood for years. And it probably could be the most efficient way, should you decide to go with an outside consultant.
That that's very helpful. Thank you.
All right. Uh I think that brings us to the uh last item on our agenda. Um. Or which is a question of whether we're gonna continue with Zoom meetings. Um the statute's been amended that would allow us to continue to have Zoom Zoom-only meetings until, is it July first? Daphne?
Uh yes, July, no, July fifteenth. So it really would not, it would not affect your meeting in July because uh your meeting in July is later than that.
So it would be the May, May and June meeting. Um oh, um I'm en- entertain views of the board members.
I'm for it.
I wanna meet you guys.
Yeah, I'll meet you in July.
So I actually, Daffy, I thought, including my, maybe it's an old meeting I have, but I thought we had a meeting in July twenty first.
Yes, but by then, the the statutory authority will have expired and we must meet in person.
We will have to meet in person, so.
Make a note of that.
Right, so you know, I you know, you know, my view has been that we've actually had increased participation. By virtue of being on Zoom and there's been no discouragement of public participation and. It's certainly convenient for all of us, so. Uh 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 unless there's objection from the board, I suppose that we have the. May and June meetings by Zoom and plan to meet in person in July. Sound good?
I agree.
I agree.
Okay.
So I'll be I'll be posting that and sending it out to you all the the changes.
Okay, so in turn.
There's no expectation the governor's going to extend this, I guess indefinitely? Looks like.
But I don't think so, but we may we may renew the request that we withdrew. To allow us to have one person participate remotely to make up a quorum. Uh when when I made, we amended our rules to allow that. And when we made a request of the town manager, we got a lot of kickback. Uh about the notion of someone participating remotely, but I think probably the the practices of the last two years have. Convinced people that it's perfectly appropriate and that that would be nice to have if we ever. Uh have somebody who's, we need somebody that's far away to make up a quorum. Um but we could visit that.
And we also have the technology because of what has happened in the last uh two years. The technology, so we have an owl in the Charles River Room for that, and I know that. Uh cable is trying to make sure that that room is completely adapted when we, when you come back in July, so that we can have a a hybrid meeting. So I think we're gonna be in good shape by then, just because of all experience.
Okay, so we ought to talk about writing decisions. Nick, when I I let you write the first one, the garage is a good place to start and. Actually, it wasn't approved. Um I I I'd be happy to do the uh. A corner lot one. Peter, how about you doing the school? I think you're an expert at that now. The school, you did the last one. And how Howard, would you? Well, I guess I guess you could be off the hook for this time. We'll we'll we'll.
I just wrote the last one, so I don't feel guilty.
Right, no, I think that's right. I I will let you do Highland Avenue.
I look forward to it.
It'll be helpful to me to get a template on a prior.
No problem. I'll send you an example of um I'll send you an example of one that's similar to that.
You you'll get lots of help from the other board members.
Oh, good luck finding a denial, yeah.
So remember, I I will be wa- writing the facts before your section, so there's. A little wiggle room there, and I will definitely send you.
Yeah, well, the the way it works is is Daphne takes a crack at the facts and I always kind of edit them. And then we send, then we then we send it to the person who's writing the decision. And and it's not that the facts part are locked in stone, you know. You can comment if you see something that's right or wrong on that too, but you you you'll have all the testimony laid out. Uh before you have to write your uh kind of decision part, but we'll get you a template too.
I'll definitely get you a template.
All right.
All right, everybody.
We done?
Thank you, guys.
All right, thank you. We're we're adjourned.
All right, good job.
Bye.
Thank you.